All right, we'll call us back in the order, but it's continuing meeting. Roger, would you just step there?
You want me to say this?
Yeah.
All right, Miss Byron, it's Father of the head in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for another day we can give us. We thank you for life and our many blessings. I pray, Father, at this time that you would look in on these sick and the aches around by us, Lord, there's so many we can't even begin to name them. Lord, let you know each heart, you know each need, and we ask in Jesus' name that you would look in and touch those in the name of this point of view as we make together. Father, I pray that you would just give us the wisdom, make decisions needed within our county to help the residents. In order to be safe, we ask in Christ's name, amen.
All right. I think I want to proceed with today, I want to just start from the front and go through because I think we've actually had some changes in the revenue.
Let me answer this, I've got three budgets and all of them is one point O, which I have.
This is the one that she printed off the office that...
Well, that's when I sent you that, that one point O, the first page, but that's what she printed off.
Yeah, it's just hard to tell which one's which, but this one she printed off, that's what she... That is actually...
I don't have one like that. That one Michael C. has played out, because it's got the name of his number.
And over here it does, I think, but what those names, the numbers fall back over here. It's just gives you, it shows, but it's actually the numbers over here.
We're in there, and we have one that should give me, I think it's this one, we've got two in the top.
Hey, I'm not blaming you, but I don't know if this happens when we get together too. I don't mind every time we provide, it's always been a face number.
Yeah.
That's where I don't, and then you can't just look in the old copy and the new copy and it's... So you all just want to start from the front, go through?
If we all got the same copy out there.
Do you got any extra copy of the two point O?
I can tell it's one of them.
Well, if you go, I think this will be, if you correct me, on the county administration on page seven. If your total is four sixty-two, seven thirty-nine, that's place one.
I got it.
That's not on the side.
Because that'd be changed from the first item.
Let's just start from the beginning. Well, do y'all want to go over to the road department while they share?
That's fine, I'm here. Yep, I'm, I'm good.
You may be able to just run your copy into her, can't it, that she left the right one?
Yes.
I feel like we're all on the same page. So if they were coming back out of page number...
She took this last year.
And I don't know, I don't know if you noticed it, but someone said, we went over and thought it was good, then we made a change. Like revenue commissioner, she went back and changed her. It doesn't change it. Yeah. Sure, but this copy's different than the first copy that he looked at. So we might as well just start at the front.
We just know that, I don't know if y'all have decided about chairs, but we just spent a ton of money on these chairs. For these, for these, it was supposed to be an isolated team, you know? We were told that chairs were big for ten years. And we spent a lot of it out, but it's like when you came in here, oh, you remember that image?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we spent on the office chair.
I don't think all those chairs, what one?
Well, it says right here, includes office chair from administration.
Office number over here.
About thirty.
About thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, we like to ask Lisa, but I don't think that's all chairs.
All right, you got it here, you got it here, we did it location, I'm like, what the?
There's a lot of them in motion.
I was sleeping on the job up there.
I just know that we spent a ton on chairs, because I asked Steve Swatter, I said, how in God's name do you spend that kind of money on chairs? He said, these chairs were like ten years. And I said, they need to last a lifetime for what we paid for. You remember that?
The chair that you're talking about was for nine one one.
It was for the office that got approved.
It was, it was a whole lot of money we spent on chairs, I know that.
I'm not saying on board chairs or against the chairs, but I think the chairs were bought for somebody six foot tall, and what we got now is four foot teen.
Yeah, but we have chairs, I don't know, that's still here.
But those chairs are broke. My working chair over there, the arms got real sick, and what they've done, they borrowed from Peter to pay tax, so.
Lisa can explain it, they need to decide what we want to do.
Yeah.
The circuit clerk, so you can take it. Five.
He says that the pipe is screwed up with cudgee, if y'all go up there and do decide to ever scrape it, that last time they messed up the pipe, he's just going to give you a heads up on it.
Okay, yeah. That's what it says, that's why, we touched it very seldom.
Yeah, that's what he said. He said this, but I told him we'd put it on the list to hit it this time, but... Because I have one question I was going to ask him, but I didn't get to that part. Just trying to keep that district one running smoothly.
I mean, I was going back to put some more rail in my speed breaker.
Will it?
You know, go back and pack in some more on my speed breaker and put me in on my new road.
Yeah, we're just going to...
Please, Roger.
Let it, let it settle.
It's settled.
Yeah.
It's settled, I'm trying to... When my vehicle hits it, it's like boom.
How did you even know you hit a month running seventy-two, seventy-eight?
I see that one, I know it's coming up.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Wonder if she said, well, follow me up here, I showed you where it is, and we're going up to the Roadwood Community Center. And anyway, I sent right in behind her, and we pulled out, and we get to the Roadwood Community Center, she's done been in there, done been to the roast, done fixed her sandwich, I'm getting out of the truck.
Four twenty, four twenty over there.
That's a little loop off Colman Lake, bro.
Is that, that's not the Kim Barton?
No, it's the next one up, it's, it's a driveway, there's one house back there, and we have a very few problems on it. It probably ain't a, I don't know if it's a quarter mile long, it may not even be a quarter mile long, but...
A whole lot to go through this thing, pages at a time. If there's no change, we go to the next page. And we carry on, and we keep up what we really want, we don't have to jump back and forth, you know?
And what I'm going to do is I'm going to flag the pages that would change this time.
Good idea.
You want a copy of the budget?
I'm good.
Don't you feel like you're getting left out?
It probably ain't the final column.
It sure ain't. So you all start backing revenues and all, I guess, just to make sure everything's good.
Okay.
Now, if it's good, we'll go on.
There is a change, that's me, he looked at it too, that that...
Really?
Yeah, there's a bunch of changes in here that they knew went over, and just said, oh, that's good, that's good, that's good, it's changed.
What about more changes? Last or so.
No, I'm talking about revenue now, we need more, I think it is a lot. We just need to start like he said, on page one, and just make like we've never seen it before, because it's just totally new business.
Because you don't actually get our total revenue in until October anyway.
This is just a... The only thing we know for sure is y'all said we're getting eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars from our... And property taxes paid in the rear, so I guess you know the question.
She said there's no problem on building that, that on equipment.
Yeah, on the tractor.
Yeah, but we just need to do it, and then just rescind the resolution for Lee, and, but that might help leave right now on that other tractor.
Yeah, just try.
But she said, you don't have, she said, I don't understand that, because she says that only brings in... So undoubtedly, it must be that we've got a sixty dollar court fee, and it only brings in a hundred and seventy thousand a year. So she's feeling a thirty dollar court fee, and that's going to go under a hundred thousand a year.
Everybody reading?
Reading.
All right, page one on the executive summary.
We'll wait a minute. Okay.
I mean, it's not actually page one, it's...
Rock and hard cover page.
Okay, here we go.
I don't have one.
So it dropped down another hundred, below a hundred thousand, it is. An estimated revenue went up a hundred thousand. There it is. I'm just going by our last, first budget we got, I got my first budget, and I got this one. It's gone down a hundred thousand.
I did go and include some of the items on the legal, that was showing expenses for that. Those are actually revenues, so I don't need to pull those now, so that's probably what the difference is right there. I actually don't get a part of anything on that estimated, that executive summary page. I do everything on revenue and budget analysis pages, because that's what feeds into that page. So the changes that we've made have, have changed that.
All right, so really, nothing to do about that. Anybody have more questions?
It's really the details, some of the papers that come up in that page.
That's covered three.
You all fine?
Yeah. Did they got any extra red glasses, because I didn't know I was coming here to do the red one.
That probably went on my computer. That didn't change anything, but you're saying that we're going to go up half revenue, I want to place it on the roof. From my estimate.
We're up on sales tax, about three hundred thousand. Uh, property tax, the, the four one one O, the very personal line, property tax for general purposes, that was a little over, but it's really not, okay? I don't know why, there was an estimated budget of seven hundred fifty thousand for FY twenty-two. There may have been some reason for that, but it was actually, you look at the actual areas that Joyce gives us for that, and she, she's collecting in a register, so she knows what she's going to get. And it was actually only six hundred sixty-four thousand, so I'm not really sure why I said that he was on there. Um, Joyce suggested that maybe it was some other assessment phase, that does actually go in a different, over a different line, and so that's not the case. But that seven hundred twenty is actually what's on our actuarial, so that should be...
What was, apparently, the day she said we was getting eight hundred fifty-five?
She's talking about the seven twenty, which is on the four one one O, and then go down to where the one eighty-four is, which is four four eight zero zero.
One eighty-four?
Uh, four four eight zero is a hundred eighty-four thousand for this year, that's the estimated. It's probably twenty lines down, something like that, twenty-three lines down.
Four four eight, federal payment.
Four four eight zero zero.
Okay.
It's federal payment.
Yeah, it's a little taxes on here. The one that sort of, I was wanting to find out about is our court fees.
I took that, it's not that, it's not that four four eight one, it's the four five two three five, that's where other assessments, I'm sorry, I was at two hundred eight thousand. Yeah, the hundred eighty-four, three, three hundred right there on line four five two three five. That's what I'm talking about, she adds that, that's her revenue commissioners, fees and commissions, that's, that's some more assessments that she does, that's what she was adding to the seven twenty. It was a hundred, she had, it was, it was budgeted as a hundred and fifty last year, but we actually collected a hundred eighty-four this year. I don't see that really going down, not with her, with her actuarials, showing from six sixty-four, seven twenty, I figured that would go up. I thought that was a stable number, it's probably actually going to be higher than that.
Okay, the four oh one, there was a big decrease in that one, the transportation section, they changed.
That's the, the transportation, where we were getting CARESAC money for the transportation payment, we're not undergaining that.
But you have a question, Amy?
Yeah, I was thinking we had two court fees that comes in, so is that saying both?
You've got two ten and two twelve, for both of those court fees, product fee and court fee.
Well, pro fee, so...
Well, apparently, they do provide a related balance that we collect. Two ten and two twentys are your court fees, which is going down of them.
It's probably because of COVID, if they weren't running communications, they would sell them, they might turn them up double.
Well, if they sell them, most times they still play their court fee.
And then, but I noticed on my budget, I have to go down, we have a big increase.
Well, what's the M, M and S court fee? Up there, where it's, there's two up there, and one's for thirty, one for seventy-five.
Forty-five, a hundred fifty, there's some of that.
That's really strange.
That probably causes for...
Where would your court costs, where would your court fees be at?
It says court fee and circuit clerk, forty-five, one ten. Estimated twenty-two was sixty-two, and that's up to seventy-five.
A lot of times, what I've done is I've looked at what was actually collected this year. Can figure out what next year's going to be. Like what they anticipated for this year.
Is that M and S?
Well, which one of these that goes to rent, equipment ground for the, or to purchase?
That's one thirteen, that's your fund, one thirteen, it's not in your general fund, but only goes for equipment. Actually goes to one thirteen, which is public highway traffic fund, that's where his equipment is, that's where it's at.
Yeah, but it's being funded by the revenue.
It's being funded by, you know, the thirty dollar phase, but that, yeah, that goes for potential one.
I think we've got a clear way of handling that though, don't you? What we talked about earlier.
It is made to...
Okay, if you'll look down on your revenue, you're still in your revenue section?
Yeah.
Look down at one thirteen. It's not going to be in your general fund, it's going to be your actual fund code, one thirteen. So flip to page four, which is the next page, and at the bottom, there's your one thirteen, there's your revenues that go in there right now. So it's about a hundred and five, this for this year, page four. The bottom, one thirteen.
So you're only estimating, you're only estimating fifty thousand.
So, uh...
Okay, so it's one, not one.
Right, one thirteen.
So that is forty-four, one seventy.
It's a little, I was thinking it was a little bit more than that at the time.
You don't think that was one out because of COVID, the last two years?
And I could go back several years.
Distance has dropped since I've been here, it's, it's dropped, even briefly, it's dropped, so.
Okay.
We'll look on that. I guess we got less crew than invited, so we can run some.
They don't legalize it all.
All right, so we good on page three? Okay, page forward.
Good on here.
Gasoline, bridge.
Okay, so... If we took, how would we do that, if we took all of that money that we set aside and swapped it for his?
We can discuss that, let's see, this is critical for the budget.
Well, I know, but...
That's not, that's, that's probably limited future, this is, this is in the budget. Uh, I mean, I'm not trying to be a smart booker, but we've got to stay on the budget. Pages four, is everybody good with that? Page five, federal aid, capital improvement, three R, gasoline.
And page five, Lisa, you can direct me if I know, but estimated numbers for twenty-two, both are twenty-one numbers.
No, that's, that's actually, that's the estimate for the end of fiscal year twenty-two, the year we're still in. That estimate is, if I take all of the revenues and then project through the end of this year, that's that number. That's what I'm expecting that we will have to end of FY twenty-two, and that's a good number to use, your FY twenty-three estimate on. But it is an estimated number, because we're not quite done with the year, so actually, I started working on this at the end of June, well, I had June's number, so I was working on it in July. So I was estimating for the rest of the year, that's what I anticipated that we were going to get.
Well, everywhere else, we're using the twenty-two number, I don't understand.
Eighty-two thousand off, I think. The eighty-two thousand came off for a reason, I can't remember what that reason was, but it's definitely like that same reason that came down.
So these are the same ones here?
Right.
Well, you would use them until she finalized the year. It's something you really got to go by.
Been fixed this year, it hasn't fixed last year, but fixed this year.
Why not use the twenty-two? Because we haven't finished the year? That's right.
Federal aid, which changed.
Yeah, that came down eighty-two thousand, and there's a reason for that, I'm trying to remember what that reason was, because I've done so much since then, but there was a reason that's coming down eighty-two this year.
It's because I had to pay for that design on the nine four bridge.
Oh, because you got to put that money back, because we haven't done the project.
There you go.
And so that year, too.
I knew there was a reason. Yeah.
Okay.
We got to give that money back. That's, that's our, our...
Then do it, I mean, that's one something.
Yeah, that's, that's, sorry.
So we're on page three.
Page six?
I guess.
Down on four eighty, on phone five thirty, now one. Why was there such a big difference, that was three hundred twenty-two to three eighty-six, two eighty-six, I'm sorry, what'd she say?
It's more than likely going to be because of what we actually, I'm going to double check it right quick before I jump in too far with that.
A lot of things on the phone line turned off.
Well, but, but this is, we're getting less money.
Uh-huh, that's what happens when you turn off a phone line, you don't get more, you get less. I mean, I've had a phone forever, I don't have a phone anymore, because of my cell phone.
But I think that putting up cell phones, we're supposed to key off some way or another.
Nobody's ever been able to explain a cell phone, for me, apart from I can, so I don't know.
What I did was, I looked up the revenue that had been collected for that, for that line item for this year, and then I projected it for the rest of the year. Because we had, at that point, had collected two hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars, and that was for nine months. So that two eighty-six was what I anticipated that we would get for the rest of the year.
It would have taken a great big jump to get what was on our...
Yeah, it would have had to really jump up like a lot the last three months for some reason.
How much did we get there last year, do you know that yet?
Hundred twenty-two. That's, that's what was from last year, yeah.
Oh, that was, that period was what was estimated.
That's the estimate.
Yeah.
That was the estimate from last year, that's not a more big...
If you look on this budget, the whole thing's going to be estimate.
It not going to have to be, because you're working in a year, you're working on a new year, you haven't done one year yet.
I was thinking about this, maybe a dumb question, but I've done it. Why can we not have a third column here where it says actual twenty-one, the actual numbers?
I have spreadsheet, it has all that on there, all of our actual...
So for her time, it took us forever to get that, Josh, you remember we went through that?
Oh, I know, and it'll be January, of course, she gets the hard numbers on twenty-two, but you should be able to put it, so we can see it when working on twenty-four budget.
Oh, yeah.
Could you make a note, try to do that next year?
I can do that. There's already a few things, and you'll, you'll see that when we go to budget next year, I have already come up with a few things that I think could go back a little easier. Um, what I'm going, what I think might help you is if I actually do, I do a year in anticipative report, and that's how I project those numbers, and I have to use those numbers for all this budget building. I think it might help you if you look at that before you've ever even seen the first copy in the budget, the first draft of the budget, and then it'll give you something to compare, this is why I came.
I was thinking of that time we were at Axonum for one time.
I don't ever remember getting Axonum.
And then you put your approved, you put what you suggest that we approve, well, we can work off of that.
See, I didn't know that, I really thought that approved meant that we had all met, discussed, figured, and that was actually the final approved numbers.
Usually it would take, you would suggest to us, and then we would break off the permit.
Uh, one thing you got to remember is, if we come from a transition where one or two people may all have decisions. So what you're talking about, yes, if it was something that's just out there, but the thing about it is, what I like to see is, is when it's put there, we wouldn't even see what the people were asking for, or what our needs were. That's where you can always say, if you've got something that you feel like it's not in the budget, because then it's all confusing, we got to change it. But if you've got a long list, it could be a list this long, that the department heads are asking for, but then that would help us keep from, okay? So these are things that was asked, that was not in the budget last year. You know, you know, a pay increase and stuff like that, there's no control of commission, you put that in your budget, these are your hard numbers. The wish list, as I always call it, should always go down there in your notes, if we got to buy four new cars, or we got to hire three new deputies. It never goes in your budget, because it has not been approved, but you know you got to fund what we had last year. So stuff that you know is mandatory funding, then you got to put that in there. But at the end of the day, when we clock out, we got to have a balanced budget, we can't spend more than we take in. But, and I think that's what, we used to, we used to be that way, but that's what, because when state, when our other administrator used to hand our budget, and it took us a while, and we got in, and then with Kim, who was working on getting us a budget, you know?
The wish list.
And then, but the wish list, don't be to be added into the budget, because then it gets confusing with your numbers.
Okay. And it makes sense, I just, I'm still trying to build my way around what you're used to and what you expect.
So, so, so when you sit, when you lay a budget out, and you're looking at last year's budget, sure they're going to add some stuff to it, then you can sort of highlight, this is the number that's changing. Some of the number, we know it's going to change, you know, you know, I mean, it is what it is, your insurance goes up, or, that's just stuff we can't have no control. Now, we would like to know, because sometimes, you know, it's like we'll give it, we'd happen to give a two percent raise, and then soon as I guess it gets in the wind, our insurance goes up two percent. Or something, I'll go up on employees, and they don't get nothing really at the end of the day, so.
Page seven.
Page seven.
Administration.
Okay, here we go.
My biggest question is on appropriations, is that going to fly on the hoggers, that big number?
That big number, that number is an actual part number, it's right, it's your discretionary fund, plus the fifty thousand that we give to the industrial development board, plus, um... The twenty thousand that are, it'll be added to your discretionary fund at the end of the, of the budget's passed, that's all I guess, there's nothing else in there.
Should, should we break out the industrial funding and put it on this online, or?
It is an appropriation, I mean, we could actually... It is an appropriation. I mean, we could actually...
We've always done it that way, Terry, for a long time.
We could put another line that says 700 on it and put a note about what that, what part of that appropriation.
Would that be 701, you think?
Would be 701.
Oh, I understand, I'm, I'm just, that's a big number.
I think we can just explain it. I mean, and, and you know, sometimes appropriations, like, if you look at this year, what actually came on appropriations was 464,000 dollars because throughout the year, things changed. More money was...
You also appropriations, there's some reason.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll think about that. Is there any other questions on, so?
I mean, if I could explain exactly what it is, I would, that I didn't know exactly.
Laura had a question about the, uh, chairs.
The chairs are in line, um, 530, which is in progress, it's 5500. I don't really think the chairs would possibly be more than I wouldn't think more than a thousand, 1,200 dollars.
So we, I know we bought chairs about before Terry come in, we spent a lot of money on chairs. And what we're told those chairs did for the last like 10 years.
Chris's is broken and Emily's is broken. They both got broken arms on them. Um, mine is okay, I'm good with what I got because I put a cushion in my seat and I have a footrest, I'm okay with what I got. Her chair, it's like she's gonna fall in front of this one.
Yeah, so it's, it's like, it's like my truck out there, it's safe, it's gonna last. But you think, usually we get those things when Terry come in office. Terry, how many years you been in the office?
Eight years, but the other chairs we bought a lot.
Yeah.
Well, you do spot them because that was, that was a big issue.
And what happens to a lot of these chairs, like her chair, for instance, we've had three different people that has rugged that chair out. And then, uh, you know, we got tall people, short people, all different kinds of people.
Okay.
Yeah. People that stood the business, called, let it leave the chair.
No, it's not all the chairs. That 5500 was actually already in there from last year. You say it's the same budget we had last year. We just figured we'd fit it in there, we might get one.
I just know that, I don't think we should go back on those expensive chairs that we've bought in the past if we're gonna have to keep replacing them once we're doing...
But that last 10 years, they're probably...
If you sit in the chair probably like 13 years.
No, one over 10 years.
There's no more money that's spent last year. Do you want to change it? That's what I said.
And it's not off the chairs. Trust me, it's not off the chairs.
Very good. Don't be late.
My question on this is, why did the circuit clerk change so much on the first meeting?
Okay, I went back and looked at, um, the insurance and telephone actual cost for this year. And that gone up that much. Those items have not been changed, but they've actually gone up that much.
So the telephone service is what went up so high?
The telephone service went up, the insurance went up, the, um, water survey went up. Everything has gone up. Electric's up, took 400 dollars. And it probably didn't jump all up at one time like that. It probably looked as if it was actually had a part of the budget at one time, but it's gradually crept up until it's gotten past it.
I flagged the telephone, and that's saying it's like, it's a big increase.
It is a lot.
Something like that.
I can tell you where our, where our actual is for the year so far. Well, I could if it was like...
That's a, and that's probably the thing we discussed that last week, we need to, see if we can find something to put on the phone, on the cell phone, anyway.
Yeah, and that's not cell, that's just their, that's just their telephone cost.
Inside, it's not, you can't do it.
But it wasn't, it wasn't...
Not cell phone?
No.
That's not.
Probably got a new system last year, didn't it? That might hire a few cheaper.
The phone expense should have actually gone down, but the, um, internet was split out, the fiber internet.
But you remember we talked about the fiber getting broke down and then...
Have the external fiber on that and on the circuit clerk, which is phone, did all get added together?
Let me see, give a file, that's what, that's the name of courthouse is, isn't it?
They don't, not everybody's got to give a file. D H got it. I think everybody uses it, but...
For June, our expense in the circuit clerk's office for the phone was already 2,000, almost 2,100 dollars. So if you, if you ground it with the energy here, that'd be right at 4,000.
Exactly, but that is the internet too, including that.
That's everything for the circuit clerk. Yeah, so there's must be still combined. Because it has not been split out from internet to telephone, it's just telephone.
So if it's, uh...
That's just the phone, that must be everything for their office.
So is it not?
2,900.
It was already over 2,000 for a month, a few months in the year, so that's, that's why. I actually, if you projected that out, it would've been 4,104 dollars, so I put it right at 4,100. Which I said it doesn't get a little bit all this year.
Alright, anything else on... Let's get to your time, I'll tell you if they got it added on quarter, quarter times. That's, I mean, that's something a lot changed.
A lot changed, we don't know what it was on.
So how much did that phone bill go up? It almost doubled, didn't it? Cause I know a giver buys about 70 dollars a month, so if you figure that times 12.
What would they pay him? I mean, what would they pay?
I'm just saying, if they had, if they had another system that they were using in there.
Essentially, they didn't, they had same...
Still went down a little bit. I don't know what they had, but I know one thing, ours went down, and it works a lot better now. We found out...
Were they, were they, were anybody connected to their internet?
I don't know what kind of system they have out there, I don't know if they had it.
She has a password.
And he has a password, he has a password. But I imagine they don't have like a guest, or it's just about a...
Just in the office. Only if it was broken out.
Maybe.
Technically, if it's on internet, we can see it.
But they gotta have the circuit on there.
I'm gonna have to look and make sure.
Probably does, it is, it's broken down.
Cause I know that some of their expenses in the courthouse are, um, shared expenses.
So let me ask you something, you plan on changing that page then? I mean, you said you're gonna check. Just gonna find that. I don't put a sticker on it.
I'll have a check on it, but I don't, I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the body of the claim.
Profit gives us office.
The district attorney and the judge, if, if that, if that number should have been provided out.
Okay, uh, let's hope you bring this one up on this next one on page nine. Uh, construction. There's, we're putting 16,000 dollars in there.
When you did that, it was a line.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
Two, 231? Okay.
Well, you found about 231.
We're on 231.
16,000 maybe. No, I'm talking about, uh, 529.
529.
Okay.
I don't see it right. Yeah, okay, I'll...
Okay, yeah, it looks like I was looking at, I'm, okay, go back there.
We did, we did that 16,000, I asked, man. Because it was a duplication.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, 529, my question is, are they gonna do that themselves? Uh, I'm just saying, uh, on the 16,000, are they, uh, looking at, uh, I just, uh, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're who's controlling it. No, it's not, it's, if we're gonna do it, I mean, they already done wrote it up, we gotta do something. But my question was, is this, uh...
Did you get it in your book? So we didn't move that 16,000 in your book?
Let me tell you one, because if we're gonna put an HPAC and Ryan's abbreviating the HPAC, I don't wanna put new carpet down when I'm through putting in ceiling grid and everything. So, uh, so it might be this, it might be that we can, I've got, we got a bunch of carpet. So it's like the places that we've brought up, I can get a guy to come in and lay the carpet what we have, for safety reasons. And then, uh, but I've got it not holds through walls and everything else, if we gotta run this return. We gotta get our... Well, I'm just saying, if, if it's gonna sit there, and that's what, I would just say that's what it's gotta be used for. I just don't want it to get, at the end of the year, it don't get done, also it gets used for something else.
Well, then does that just need to be moved over into your budget and out of his budget?
No, I, I, I just wanna make sure it stays there.
It's on, it's on 231, that's the carpet and the ceiling tiles, that was the two things that he had. Here were a drop ceiling, something in his office.
It's fine for it to stay in there. I, I, we know to pull it from there. But, uh, that'll work, I'll put it out there, it'd be good.
Make, make you a note that Ryan can't do nothing with that number.
That it only can be used for what it was, what it was set there for. Was the ceiling tile and...
Cause I'm, yeah, that's a good one.
Alright, any, any more questions on?
No.
Okay, go to page 10. And page 10, he was, paper was supposed to go to the...
I stopped April, actually Ryan came and talked to me about elections. And, um, we came to a meeting of the minds, and I had made some changes on that, and it's gonna take the, and, and you don't have to change it because we just did this Friday. He met, came back with me Friday.
Is it more than 93,000 dollars?
It's, um, it's actually going down to, let's see, elections. And what it is, he sat and talked to me about the, um, that actually, I'm, I'm better off to look at the budget for, not FY22, but for FY21, because every year is the election.
You only got the general election in the, you don't have, the primary knowledge goes in last year, right?
In FY22?
Yeah.
That's right. So, so what it actually comes down to is I've, I've reduced it down to, um,
Election workers.
The flash...
Seventy, it's gonna go down to 74,613 dollars.
74,000?
613 dollars.
So you've moved it down the election workers and...
Yes, election workers. It affects several things because of the, it's not just the...
Advertisement.
Yes, every, a lot of those items go down. Not everything, like your air, your voting machine, all that. Your utilities and all that are gonna stay.
See, some, some of that, some of that doesn't make any sense to me. Because absentee ballots will go out before the new budget goes in. So absentee ballots are gonna be on the 22 year, and the election's gonna be on the 23 year, right? Is that right?
That will be a prepay expense, the, the prepay expense for this coming year, so it still counts for this coming year.
So it'll still be on the 23 budget?
Yes.
Okay, so anything associated with the general elections, it'll be on the 23, and the primary was on 22?
That's, that's what I took it as, during. I, I kept going back during looking at the numbers, looking at the time.
It's sort of confusing the way...
It is the view.
And we'll get back to that, alright, alright?
Yes.
So we're looking at 37,000.
Yeah, I mean, I'm watching, do what I'm doing.
That's good.
Alright, so, border registers. It actually went down 15 dollars. Anybody got any questions?
No.
No. Alright, page 11. Questions?
No.
About... Um, this, this is my tip of Kelly building. Um, but you, um, is the changes on the corner's offices, are they gonna be in here or are they gonna be in his budget?
Change of the corner's budget is, uh, the 3,500, right? Right up there, it says, uh...
The construction cost.
3,500. This, are we still on page 11? Yeah. Another thing is now the, uh, yeah, that's, that's the 3,500 right there.
For that wall.
But the, uh, but the, we're also looking at the charcoal thing that's coming out of, uh...
The corner's budget.
The ARCA money. And the, the, you know, that we told him to give us a, to apply for the, that new cor, that new, uh, cooler and that charcoal machine to apply it to the ARCA money.
So now that should be in the budget.
That's right.
Cause that's feature, thanks for trying to...
But just what this right here does is the walls and the blah, 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 this.
Got you.
What's done, 41,000 got taken out?
Yeah.
Are you good with that? Alright, any more questions on that?
I've got one.
Okay, go ahead.
The total on, on FY22. Uh, I need to check that total.
Okay.
What do you think on?
I think it's 184,932.
I'm sorry, this is a miscalculation?
Yeah, it's a miscalculation.
Well, I think we're probably gonna have a carryover in that budget of of a good debt.
Well, I'm not putting out that 41 you haven't used yet.
Yeah, well, that was unbasemental, figuring off the older budget.
Yeah, that's it, right. But, I mean, it's all, it's all, um, it's all estimate anyway.
But you're good with the 156, right? Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope.
Page 12. Sheriff's office.
But they don't have the resource officers, they're not gonna do it.
Oh, yeah, that ain't the case, so you can't.
Yeah. You're looking at 12.
I did know that add that in, and I could've figured out some numbers for you, but at the same time, it was gonna be a lot to figure, because it's not just, it doesn't just affect that one line, like salaries, it affects your vehicles force maintenance, which you would think, not, not...
We can't deal with that.
It's a lot, it's a whole lot.
You just need to forget about the...
Right. It was one line to be, to compare, but it's not. It's probably 10.
Okay. The workers company. I know we discussed this last time. How do you wanna do it, and how's the officer's gonna be good to do it? I mean, we figuring in the money we're gonna get back, or we're not gonna figure in the money we're getting back?
Let me, um, and we need to be across the...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, every department needs to be the same way.
What I need to look at is see what's in that fund, and I, I thought about that a lot this weekend. Um, let me look and see what's in that fund, see what, because what we would need to do is look at what's left in the fund that we can apply toward this year, and see how much we can take out of each one's budget. And it'll affect all of them, I mean, if you want me to do it that way, but I could tell you, I should have to tell you tomorrow.
Okay. And my next question is, the sheriff don't control that money, you control that money. Okay. So even if it is a big number that we're not gonna spend, you can't take that money and roll it over into something else?
You can't do anything. You can't do anything with salary line, I'm sorry. So, I mean, that's, that's been pretty slow passed.
Okay, any questions on 12?
Okay, yeah, 12. 212, they didn't, they didn't show any increase at all in fuel costs. That's a concern of mine, the engineering department did show the increase. But the sheriff did not.
Well, I went back and looked, I went back and looked at the sheriff's office, um, looked at their budget for this year. And their fuels were actually at closer to 65,000 dollars this year.
Well...
So, I actually wanted to note that we probably need to change that to, to 65,000 instead of 50,000. Cause it was, my anticipation for the end of the year was 64,000 dollars.
He can pull that from some of those other ones.
He could, he could pull it from others. That would add another 15,000 to his budget, and then I had one more, and that was line 272, and that was insurance. Cause the insurance this year was a little lower, 5...